Plaid to what you do this through the flag of the United States of America and to develop which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, we have our community development and planning directors' report. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. We'd just like to update the planning commission that we did receive a temp- and approve a temporary tent for fireworks. It'll be located at the Royal Farms. It will be up until July 10th. Thank you.
Item number two, upcoming meetings and activities. Next Monday, May 19th at 3:00 PM, town council committee meetings. Next Tuesday, May 20th, you can join me at the Board of Historic and Overture Review Meeting. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on the same day has been canceled. Tuesday, June 3rd, 6:30, Town Council will meet and Planning Commission will meet again on Tuesday, June 10th, again at 6:30. Under public comments, the public is invited to speak to the Planning Commission on any matters except scheduled public hearings. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Any required response from the town will be provided in writing following the meeting. Do we have any signups? Seeing none, we will move on. Any Planning Commission comments this evening?
Ma'am, I have one. Unfortunately, I had to miss the previous meeting, but I just want to make a comment to the council or the commission and thank you for all your help working. We were able to work through two projects recently with the town council, notably the cottages, that we were able to work with them and get down to effectively a by right build with no requests required for their density or setbacks, only for, I believe it was RV parking and a number of attached homes, as well as looking at the property in the historic district that was previously owned by Mr. Luder that will be developed eventually, I'm sure. But I'd like to thank the Planning Commission on all their work for that and the public for their input and recognition that, you know, that growth is being managed by the town and the Planning Commission. So, thank you all for your help with that.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Any other comments?
Did something happen to that property? As far as I know, it's dead with the Luder property. I'm not sure what happened with that.
What, the Grange?
No, no. Are you talking the Grange or are you talking about?
No, no.
James and Washington Street?
James and Washington Street. I mean, it hasn't approved plan that it was sold with.
It has or it has not?
Nothing new has happened with it, I'm aware of.
I don't think anything's happened with it. I think it's dead.
Any other comments? Thank you. All right. Item number five is a public hearing, conditional rezoning, three SUPs and a PC waiver regarding the promontory Greenwood Homes care of Kent Henry applicants. Ms. Clary, do you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning. This would be to the planned mixed-use development, PMUD. This is to facilitate the construction of five commercial lots, a future commercial area, 131 single-family detached units, 108 single-family attached units, with a maximum of 239 units in total, 26.7 acres of open space. It will be phased, starting with the commercial sites. The road beside tractor supply will be extended with a network of public roads connecting to Cypress Run Drive and Turner Drive. In order to facilitate this project, they have applied for the rezoning. The uses that the applicant is proposing, the attached and detached fast food restaurant, car wash restaurant, drive-in bank, are permissible in the planned mixed-use development district. These uses are also in line with the future land use map as the current designations are residential mixed use and corridor mixed use, which provide for primary residential uses and mixed commercial multifamily residential uses. The applicants have also applied for a special use permit to allow drive-through facilities. This would be to utilize drive-through facilities on all five commercial parcels with the current plan of a drive-in bank, fast food restaurant with a drive-through window. The second special use permit is for a waiver of yard requirements for reduced setbacks. The required front and rear of 35 and side 15 feet would be reduced to 20 feet for the rear, 10 feet for the side, 18 for the front for the townhouse and villa, and 20 for the front for the single-family dwellings. The third special use permit is for a waiver of maximum density. This is only for the attached units, which do exceed the eight units per net developable acre. They are at 10.36 units per net developable acre. The detached single-family dwellings are under the maximum density at 3.3, excuse me, 3.03 units per acre, with an overall density of 4.42 units per net developable acre. Finally, a Planning Commission waiver. This is for a waiver of the 50-foot buffer requirement. It would be reduced to a 30-foot buffer with landscaped screening. The Planning Commission is allowed to reduce the minimum buffer on a case-by-case basis, and it would only be applicable to the 13 villa units and five single-family dwellings, which are located at the front of the property. The amenities will include signage, multipurpose lawns, grill areas, waterfront deck, fishing outposts, plantings, seating totlock, open view to the lake, bike racks, pedestrian paths, picnic tables, et cetera. The applicants have, will have a property owners association that will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the open space, common areas, and other amenities noted in the conceptual plan, along with their stormwater infrastructure and landscaped buffer areas. They are proffering three additional road improvements. Additionally, a conditional cash proffer to Isle of Wight County schools if they are over enrollment capacity at Smithfield Middle School at the time of the CO issuance. And additionally, no more than 60 zoning permits will be issued in a 12 consecutive month period for the residential units with a carry-forward provision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, commissioners.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kent Henry Greenwood Homes, 3122 West Marshall Street, Richmond, Virginia. Thanks for the time this evening. This slide deck will be familiar to what you all saw when we were up here in April. We went ahead and took some of the feedback from that meeting in February with you all and made the changes to our plan, reducing our density down from 262 units to 239, increasing the setbacks, changing the commercial setbacks so that there was no waiver requests there, and then increasing the landscape buffer with our neighbors to the north. So, the orange on the screen is our villa product. We went ahead and substituted some of our townhouses for the villas to bring down the attached density per acre, as well as kind of offer more of a diversity of product and bring more villas in, which are two stories in the front and they slope to one in the rear, offer primary level living, and, you know, allow us to have universal design for aging in place. So, we went ahead and included 68 villas on this plan and reduced the townhomes to 40, which are in the pink, and centered behind the commercial, kind of in that eyebrow. And then, the remainder of the project, we have single-family detached. The waiver requests, then Ms. Clary went through for the drive-through facilities, the waiver of yard requirements and reduced setbacks, and then the maximum density that's associated with the attached product at 10.36 units per acre over the eight units an acre that's in the code. Overall, 4.42 units an acre per developable net on the project and 26.7 acres of open space. The waiver requests related to the landscaping buffer, I've included two exhibits on the screen. Since the last time we were here, we went ahead and added in landscaping. That is now part of this plan and reflected in our pattern book as well. We will have a three-foot buffer, or a berm, on the 30-foot buffer that is behind the villas. On top of that berm, we'll be planting Hollies or Nellie Stevens to create an effective buffer from our neighbor, as well as adding plantings behind and in front of the berm to create some depth, so that grows in pretty full. Along with that, we are adding a three-board fence for a physical barrier of separation as well. The waiver is for the 30 feet on the 13 villas. As we get back closer to our neighbor, we go above the 50-foot buffer requirement to 119 to create more space as we get closer to our neighbors' residence. The plantings and fence will stay in place, and we're not clearing any trees, existing trees on that tree line. Here's the zoning concept map that has been updated to reflect the setbacks, the reduced density, and the landscape buffer. And then, phasing plan, still proffering to do the commercial first. We have our commercial broker with us. He can talk to more details on the commercial itself, but we have a lot of interest there, and the goal is to bring that online as soon as possible. The residential will be done in five phases after that. We have now proffered that there will be no more than 60 zoning permits per year to help space out impacts on schools, potential impacts on schools. We've also proffered all of the amenity improvements and called those out in our pattern book. We have five pocket parks and a trail system. All of the amenities that are shown here are proffered, but we have our promontory park, Dragonfly Park, which is a totlot with open space, the North Creekside Park with a fire pit, South Creekside Park, which is a trail terminus for us, some more informal seating, the Lakeside Park, which will have a pergola, picnic tables, and beach access. And then, our traffic plan, we have four points of access throughout the project. The, when included in the Master Ben's Church TIA, the parcel that we're looking at had 262 units contemplated, so trips have gone down with the reduction in density. We are maintaining the four points of access and the associated traffic improvements from the Master TIA, and those are proffered. And then, school impacts as well. In a letter dated December of 2024 from Isle of Wight County Schools, our impacts were at 89 students, and with those impacts, it was projected that Smithfield Middle School would be over capacity by 12 students, which is reflected in our proffer. We are now down to 73 students. I do not believe we have received any more feedback from Isle of Wight County Schools as of yet, Ms. Clary. Is that correct? So, the proffer remains that the last comments we received was those 12 students would be over capacity, and we can only proffer for the directly attributable need, and so we have included that in our proffers to date. Fiscal impacts with the updated unit counts, once stabilized, Town of Smithfield will expect a surplus revenue of $1.8 million over the initial 10 years. Isle of Wight will expect a surplus revenue of $8.3 million over the initial 10 years. Notable proffers, the pattern book for architectural and landscape standards, the amenities are all proffered and tied into that pattern book as well, the construction of the two turn lanes corresponding to the Ben's Church Master TIA, the conditional million-dollar payment for the construction of the roundabout on Turner Drive, the conditional payment, Isle of Wight County Schools for Smithfield Middle School when we are over capacity, commercial parcels being developed first with no more than 60 zoning permits issued per year, and then a restriction of piers and docks on Cypress Creek as well. Again, above is some elevations from the pattern book, kind of setting architectural standards throughout the community. Exterior finishes are cement siding, metal seam roofs, architectural shingles, masonry, real stone, and synthetic decks. And then, some photos of existing product. And I'll note that this has been a process we've been working through for a couple of years with staff in private, and then certainly have come to you all twice as discussion items. We held a community meeting last week to try and get one in before the public hearing tonight. I'll note that we'll be holding additional community meetings as we work through this process. Actually found out after the fact that we had inadvertently held that on a town council meeting night. Once three people showed up, and I was reading the paper the next day, and saw the cottages had been improved. So, I just want to let everyone know that the intent is for us to, you know, it's certainly a very public process. We want to engage with our neighbors as much as we can and get feedback from you all. So, we will be holding more with more advance and not in town council nights. But happy to open the floor for additional questions and comments as we work through this.
If you will hang tight, we're going to do the public hearing now and then?
Absolutely.
Commission members may have questions for you later. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is an official public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. Ms. Clary, do we have anyone signed up? We have Ms. Beth Kirby. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Beth Kirby, 328 Grace Street. A few things that I was concerned about, and he may have made some changes so that this isn't relevant, but I hate to see the shrinking of green space, taking the buffer from 50 down to 30, shrinking people's backyards, shrinking the side lots. I know that's not a comfortable way to live. I certainly wouldn't want to live like that. We used to pull up to houses for sale, turn our car off, roll all the windows down, and say, can we hear any traffic? If we heard traffic, we said, that's it, we're not staying here. But, you know, things are important to people, and green space is important. I wouldn't want my neighbors on top of me. He had said that they weren't going to do a pool house, clubhouse. I mentioned that to a lot of different people and said that, according to him, after COVID, people weren't interested in that anymore, and just having a walking trail would suffice. Nobody agreed with that. As moms, you want a place where your kids can hang out with their friends. I know my kids, as youngsters, wanted to swim every single day. I don't know if that lake water is going to be swimmable, if they're even going to allow that, but certainly don't shrink the yards to the point that families can't put in a pool if they want to put in a pool. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Does anyone else who did not have opportunity to sign up to speak this evening? All right, hang on. We will close the public hearing. Commissioners, what say you? Nothing? Somebody else wants to go first, that's fine.
Well, I have a host of questions and comments. For starters, for Ms. Clary or someone else, is PMUD the only option for this, or could we also rezone it as a residential component and a commercial component?
Well, the PMUD's the only one that allows the mix of the unit types, along with the commercial. If you notice that there are sections where it's single-family dwelling along with the villas/townhouses intermingled, so it wouldn't be a clean break between the two.
And that would include the villas, not just the townhouses?
That is correct, the attached residential portions.
Okay, thank you. The 60-unit limit, I noticed that it's, what does it say, stackable or what have you? When would that start? Would that start with the first unit, and then the 60 counter starts? Or would it start with the phase one in the commercial? If they took a year building the commercial, then the next year, you know, they could effectively be building 120 here. If it's two years before they started, they could build 180 in the first year.
Says it starts with the, at the time of final construction plan approval for the first phase, there shall be no more than 60 zoning permits issued by the town for residential units. So, the clock starts with the first residential phase of approval.
So, is that the plat approval?
Well, yeah, it would be.
It would be the site plan.
Well, site, yeah.
Site plan.
But that's sort of, this, this, these are lots, not condos, right? Single-family lots. So, there'll be a plat, there will be a plat. You can't get your plat approved until the site plan is approved.
True, true. So, that's just a thought, if that would be problematic potentially. A number of comments from VDOT on the TIA. Have you guys addressed those? I mean, your TIA document is quite long, so are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I am. We actually resubmitted the TIA yesterday back to VDOT, and Kim Lee Horn, our traffic engineer, who are here, had a conversation with VDOT last week. Can you come up to Devon real quick and detail that?
Good evening. Devon Simpson, Kim Lee Horn, 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Yes, so if there are specific comments you're talking about, is it on the memo specifically, or the Bench Church Master TIA? Do you have something specific?
Well, I guess my question now is, are we going to see a new TIA?
So, the way we did this, so we did the Bench Church Master TIA, which included several developments, and then we did an update memo for the promontory to basically document the difference now that they have a reduction in units. And so, we've addressed all VDOT comments on that to date. The impacts in terms of operational analysis are all the same since we had a reduction in units. And the comments that they had last week that we talked through with them were largely just regarding markups, figures, kind of more of the way we presented the information, more than the actual results. So, we don't expect to have any other updates beyond what you've probably seen thus far.
So, you submitted a new TIA to VDOT?
We submitted an updated memo, so I don't know if you all have. So, we have the Bench Church Master TIA, that's one document, and then there's a promontory traffic memorandum. That was resubmitted last week, and again, mostly it was just including some figures for clarity, but there was no changes to the operational analysis from what you've seen previously.
We just haven't received anything from VDOT yet stating that all of the comments have been addressed.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, is we're going to receive something additional.
Sure, yes. So, because of the timeline, so we met with them Thursday, just before we resubmitted, to make sure this, what the changes we made, we had a verbal conversation with them that we've addressed all their comments, but they will certainly follow up eventually with documentation for you all of that.
Okay, thank you. Currently, what price are we looking at for the homes?
Four hundreds for the townhouses and villas, and then 600s for the singles, with some of the larger lots or waterfront having a premium just because of larger acreage or what they're backing up to.
You're saying 400 and 600 entry?
Correct.
All right, you're requesting a buffer reduction. The buffer is to maintain, you know, a good barrier from your neighbor, so why should we approve that?
So, we've been working with our neighbors. One, we wanted to focus the largest part of the buffer as we got closer to their residence. So, at the rear of the property, we have 119 feet in the buffer. As we get closer, and the lake kind of pinches down the land, it gets a little tight. So, we've been working with our neighbors to create a dense buffer in that 30 feet, and you'll note that, you know, the 30-foot buffer, as well as the setback, gives 61 feet from rear of house to property line. But the goal here was to enlarge the buffer as we get closer to their residence, and then make sure the buffer is dense and has some height to it behind the villas to help with the screening as it gets pinched by the lake. Kind of this pinch point in here.
I mean, I can see that, you know, I saw that in the drawings. All I can really determine on this is that it gives you more buildable acreage. Is that correct? Is that the only reason for it?
Correct.
At the sacrifice of the neighbor?
You mentioned that with the 30-foot buffer, and then the setback for the villas, it would be 61 feet, but I've got on here that you want 20 feet. You're requesting 20 feet as the back, as the rear setback. Is that correct?
That is for the setback of the structure. Mr. Cutler was talking about the buffer that's required when a lot abuts a residential, residentially zoned property.
Right. Okay. So, the villa's backyard will be 20 feet deep and then the berm?
Correct. So, 20 feet deep and then a 30-foot buffer was the plan.
I have a few questions or comments about density and setbacks, but before I do, you know, we just recently, the town council worked through some, worked through with a developer, and, you know, I'm just going to say, I think your density, you know, your drive-through special use permit, it's probably not going to be a huge problem, but your density special use permit, I would rather see it within state units per acre limit, within the by-rate limits, as well as your setbacks. We owe it to future residents to build a beautiful neighborhood, and you, I rode by your property today and on many days, but purposely today. You have a really beautiful property, and as it was winding through the process, you know, there was a lot of discussion about it being, you know, having the potential to be one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in town. And I think if you, I think if you work through the density, particularly with your townhomes, there's a, I've had a number of people discuss what a beautiful neighborhood you could have, especially if you reduce the density, make the yards a little bit larger. I mean, you're not far
Okay.
from our limits. And the townhomes, you know, you have a potentially very beautiful neighborhood, and maybe the townhomes are detractor from that. Removing those may help your density issue. But I think that, you know, of course, we appreciate that you reduced the density from your initial proposal, but every developer does that, so we appreciate it, but it's not enough. So, just from having recently campaigned and talked to a lot of citizens in the Town of Smithfield, manage growth, manage density, neighborhoods where people want to live and raise their kids. So, we'd certainly like to work with you to get there, but my takeaway is where those two SUPs are.
Okay.
Not will.
Great feedback.
Additionally, I had questions about, and I would like to ask the town attorney to just chime in if need be, but I have a question about your proffers. So, you have a voluntary proffer for the schools, and it's conditional, so I just don't understand why it's conditional.
My understanding is that we can only offer the proffer if there's a directly attributable need, which is when the schools are over capacity. And from that initial submittal with 262 units and 89 students generated, it was noted that with everything that was in the pipeline, once it's built out, our project puts Smithfield Middle over by 12 students, and so we were only able to offer the proffer to those 12 students that we put over. And that's my understanding.
So, would it, for numbers sake, let's say 100% is 100 students, and your development put in the 99th student, would that not be an impact on our school system?
It would be an impact. I'm not sure that with cash proffer law, I'm able to pay for that impact since it's not over capacity, but...
So, in March in Suffolk, I watched the Planning Commission, and I watched a Virginia Beach builder come in, no questions, first presentation on the development, and offer cash proffer at, it was some 60 students. Had not been asked any questions by the planning commission yet. There was no discussion of schools being over capacity. It was strictly an impact on the school by bringing that, that development had the potential to bring, I think it was sixty students.
Okay.
So I looked at some, I got some information from the school board, and...
I just also wanna note that that overcapacity also included the fully-built-out Grange project, along with the cottages at a hundred and fifty units as well, as part of their calculations. So that would have to be reconfigured.
Yeah, and I thi- I think that points to, you know, we certainly can have some closer partnership with our school systems to, to do that, but in your original, two hundred and sixty-two units, it was eighty-nine additional students in the northern end of the county, thirty-eight to Hardy, ten to Westside, thirteen to Smithfield Middle, and twenty-eight to the high school. But all those schools, so at the end of the second paragraph, says program capacity at Hardy, Westside and Smithfield High will be ninety-five to ninety-nine percent, while Smithfield Middle will exceed capacity. So, I mean, I would like for there to be a further discussion about this. I, I think that, you know, of course, within the legal bounds.
Certainly.
Because I foresee a, a situation where we have different builders with different proffers, and our school's becoming overloaded and not receiving any support from the developers that brought all those students to our town. So, and we run that risk. Right now, when we run that risk, was conditional proffers.
Certainly, and happy to carry on that conversation as it relates to schools and the proffer itself.
Is that all, Mr. Cutler?
That's a good stopping point.
Anybody else?
Oh, just one question.
Yes, sir.
I see that one question. Addressing what one of the citizens mentioned about not having a clubhouse, how did you come to that conclusion?
We traditionally built clubhouses in our neighborhood, and, you know, put in the infrastructure, and ultimately has become a burden on the HOAs, as they're paying increased dues for utilities and staffing at the pools. We have a community in Louisa County, which is further west on sixty-four, Spring Creek, that has an established clubhouse. And that has been a lot of maintenance that has been pushed to the HOA, just with due structure. And then we have seen in the new communities that we've been developing, where we have left out the clubhouses and focused on pocket parks and informal areas like fire pits and access to the lake, that we, it's been well-received. A couple of our communities, we have coffee clubs that meet at the fire pit every morning and use it as their kids play on the playground. So, it's, you know, it's kind of a lived experience for us, where we're able to kind of keep the burden off the homeowners with increased dues and maintenance on the facilities and lifeguards and that sort of deal. And then also, all the amenities and pocket parks that we've been putting in have been well-received.
Well, you, you're drawing those conclusions from your developments. What, what about other developers? Do they have that same problem?
I can only draw the conclusions from my experience, and again, I'm happy to look into that further.
I'll, I'll comment on that, because in Cypress Creek this past year, we got assessed an additional eight hundred dollars per home, per lot owner, because our tennis courts and basketball courts had deteriorated to disrepair over twenty-odd years, thirty, whatever, nineteen ninety-five, thirty years. Cost over four hundred thousand dollars for them to repair the tennis courts and the basketball courts. Homeowner Association has to do it by law, because it's an amenity that's proffered and has to be maintained. So therefore, they had to come up with the money and the, and the resources to do it. And it's a, it's a, it came a maintenance and a legal hazard for the community. So it had to be maintained, and they didn't have an option just to say, "We're gonna forget it, because it's an amenity that has to be maintained." That's exactly what he's speaking of, and we just, this was all back in November, December for our neighborhood of what happened, and it's created a huge uproar in our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Dr. Pope. One other question. You submitted a, a new document, documentation of TIA's to VDOT. Did they give you any hint of timeline when that document would come back, their comments would come back?
They did not, to my knowledge. Nothing, no, sir. We can follow up on the request, though.
So no idea how much time we, we have to wait for VDOT to give a final assessment of this project?
As of now, yes.
Maybe go.
Yes.
Okay.
So as far as setbacks, are there, first of all, are there sidewalks in the community?
Yes, there are sidewalks on both sides of the street throughout the community with access to the commercial parcels.
Okay, so walking and riding bikes and all. I don't have as much concern with the front setbacks, because where I live, the houses are very, but most of us are real close to the sidewalk. And when you're out on the front porch, it's, it's real community. But the backyard, that's where you go for privacy. That's where you would go, as Ms. Kirby said, if anybody wanted to build a pool or anything like that. And with the setbacks that you're requesting, they don't have that opportunity. And to me, with that price, single-family dwelling that you're looking at, they should be able to have that option. And with what you're asking for, they would not. So I will tell you, I'm not in favor, particularly of your backyard setbacks. Not crazy about the side yard setbacks either. But, again, that's more livable to me than the, than the backyard.
Thank you. Great feedback, and something certainly we can work with staff on and take into consideration as we're working through these comments.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, it's gonna cut down on your density, which y'all are asking for more density anyway. And I understand it all. That's why you're doing this. And you do wanna have a great product. I think it will help to have bigger backyards.
Thank you.
Thanks, CJ.
I would make another comment, if I may. And, and this is to the commission, really. Looking at our comprehensive plan that we just revised a couple of years ago, if you look at page one fifty-five on the Town Services and Infrastructure, it recommends, this is our own comprehensive plan. It recommends that we increase density for greater efficiency of services, particularly in new developments. This is coming from our comprehensive plan. Okay? We focus on density. If you not, do not look at these applications just from a perspective of developer and what they're bringing, and then you look at it as a business, how you grow your business. This is how local governments are growing. And you can see the figures that they project will come into the town from increased revenue, various taxes, by adding, by having additional homes for citizens, for families to move here. Look at it as a business. Look at it as a business, and businesses increase value for their shareholders. That's what you do. We keep restricting these things. How do we handle? How do we handle our economic, our financial requirements for capital improvement and such? How will we handle that?
And, Mr. Brian, I, I understand, act, development is a business, absolutely. But in the way that our town is laid out, our town and county is laid out, we don't have access for more roads. Sure, we have access for roads within a development, but you've got Route Ten, whether it's business or, or the bypass. That's how people get in and out of Smithfield. Not a whole lot else, but if you build, if you overbuild, in my opinion, you overbuild in developments, we're just gonna be bottlenecked. And we already, or there are already other things in the pipeline that are gonna be built, that are bringing even more and more traffic.
Like, I, I agree, I agree with that.
That's where I come from, as far as, I feel like we need to be real careful with how, how much more we can put into our town limits.
Well, there are a lot of things to ask concerning that, but I'm just reminding you, what about comprehensive plan is encouraged of us to do?
Well, I think, when I, when I read the comprehensive plan, front to back, an interesting finding that I had was that the citizens had a lot of input to the comprehensive plan. And what they said was more commercial and retail options. What they said repeatedly was reduced traffic, reduced growth. Somehow, the comprehensive plan came out to say also increase density, but when you looked at the citizens' comments, I think it was, it was inconsistent with the citizens' comments as it relates to growth and density.
I'll make that comment again, that you can restrict growth, but you don't have to do it by restricting density. And I look at what we do on a lot of these decisions here, and you, you know, someone spoke earlier wanting a bigger yard and bigger things, you know, bigger room, more room for a pool and whatever out back. But when I'm seeing what's going on in the market, this next generation isn't looking to maintain their yard. They're not looking for more yard space. They're doing focused activities, they do group activities, they do teams, they do organized sports, they do those types of activities, and that's the way things are going these days. So the good old days of when I grew up, walked out the backyard and spent the day running around the woods and everything. That's not what kids do these days. That's not the way the families live these days. That's not the amenities that they're looking for. So, give them a smaller yard, they're gonna spend more focused time on activities, less time on yard work. They're not looking for a big yard. Increase the density so that it's more affordable, and that's what they're looking for, is something that's more affordable to live, so they can go live the lives the way they wanna do them. Decrease the density, you raise the cost, you cut a lot of those people out of coming to Smithfield. So I guess that's what I look at, is what do we want to do as a community? Cut these people out and only let people that can afford six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar houses in? Or do we wanna make things that have a mixture of available resources? And I look at things like, I mean, even places like East Beach over in, you know, in, in Norfolk. There's a whole mixture in that development of townhouses and single-family houses, smaller units and larger units, all in one development. And everybody of all mixes can afford to live in different units that are available in that. But some of those are a lot more dense, but it's all in that same development. So, you pack it, you make it affordable, you make different housing things available for people by doing something like this mixed-use development, and allows a mixed community to move in. You make it all single-family homes, decrease the density, you've got one type of person and one type of community that you're gonna develop. And that's what I don't like to see, is us restricting who's gonna be able to come into the town.
Well said, Mr. Yocum. And, and adding to what Dr. Pope said about what happened here with the amenities in Cypress Creek, how much it costs per citizen in that development. Well, if it was more citizens in that development, that would have lessened the financial liability on an individual, okay? So, again, the community, the comprehensive plan says for greater efficiency. That's what it says. We're not gonna get that if we keep increasing requirements for what can be built anywhere. If we keep reducing the density, if that's, if that, if that's our only path, is just reduce the density, we're not gonna get efficiency. We're not gonna get it.
Dr. Pope?
Follow up on Gigi's comment and the resident. Putting a pool in is not dictated by the building envelope. The pool is dictated by the property lines. You can put a pool up to so many feet of the property line, right? And so, even though there's a building envelope, that building envelope's twenty feet, but I don't remember what the restriction is for a pool. I think you can get as close to ten feet to the property line. So even though the building envelope is what it is, the pool is, it could be closer. So even if you're looking at this saying, "There's no way you're gonna put a pool back there." Heck, my pool's only ten feet wide, so it's pretty narrow. So I don't think that's a decision factor in my mind. There are people gonna be creative on how to use their property and what's going on. He has to use a smaller lot size in that landscape buffer, because he has no other way to develop it. And, and if you're gonna hold him to a fifty-foot buffer up there, we're just gonna cripple him. What's important is what the resident that lives beside it thinks, and what they comment about, and are they happy with the increased density of plantings really shielding them? And are they worried about the thirty-foot buffer? This development is not in downtown, and I would love for Kim Lee Horn to tell me how many cars are gonna go down a gray street from this development? Because if our roads cannot handle this development, then we've got a serious problem with our roads, and VDOT really needs to look at Route Ten. And I believe in our future discussion this evening, where either the master TIA plan shows that Route Ten may be going to a three-lane road somewhere in the future. And I think putting our road and dumping our traffic onto Route Ten, even if it's three thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight trips it's generating out of this TIA, if that road can't handle it, then we'll never develop. And I, I, I think that's an irregular, I think it's an irrelevant argument right now for this. I, I think he scaled this down, it's appropriate. Some of the houses are gonna be affordable, because they have smaller lots that may be more limited, and it creates a development plan. We get a commercial property, they get contribution towards the roundabout. There's a lot of positives that are coming out of this. They're not getting a boat dock in, they're not gonna stress the waterway, I mean, all those types of things. I, I, I think what they're asking for is pretty reasonable at this stage. I, I would just love to hear and know what the residents think about the, about the thirty-foot buffer, and how they feel about how they are being, how their adjacent properties affect it.
Here, here.
Thank you, Dr. Pope.
But I wanna go back to VDOT, if I may. And maybe Attorney Riddick or Director Cleric can chime in here. But in your, in your analysis that you sent to VDOT, there was a statement about acquisition of some property, I suppose, in front of that Sherman Williams, whereas you could build that, that in-and-out ramp that VDOT recommend. Where you standing with that? You understand what I said?
No, I think that's for a different project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself. I'm thinking about the, the other one, the interstate though. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't know if they want me answering that for them.
No, no, that's all right. I'll hold it for that one.
One, one other comment, true or not true, you know, I get a lot of feedback in the office. Are y'all allowing a sewer connection for the church?
Yeah, so that just came up, again, at our ill-timed community meeting last Tuesday at six-thirty, where we were hosting it at the church, and they had asked for a sewer connection. So our engineers are working on putting that in our plan to see the viability of it. But the, the connection would be, their drain field's right kinda here, adjacent to the playground at the church. And so we would try and come and tie in kind of through open space between the houses and into our sewer system. So we're evaluating that right now. But our, our intent is to leave a stub for the church to tie into, which will allow them to expand their parking and get on, I guess it'd be Isle of Wight utilities at that point.
Anything further?
Yeah, just as it relates to the, the density and the types of housing, you know, I think also in, in looking at this, we have the cottages that is gonna go in at, at a lower or near same price point. We have the, you know, the home, eight hundred and some homes going in at Mallory, that, you know, unless the townhomes are in four hundreds or below, it's gonna be, what, six hundred, five hundred K-plus homes over there. So I, I mean, I appreciate the argument of a four hundred So, I mean, I appreciate the argument of a $400,000 home, but, you know, it takes about a $108,000 a year to purchase a home like that, $110,000 a year income to purchase with a 20% down payment. So, you know, I think that we have a lot of variety of homes being offered throughout the town, but none of our new homes are coming in, townhomes or anything, under around 400K. So, you know, to think that building a little bit more density at 10 homes per acre vise eight homes per acre is going to change the price of these homes to make them affordable for, say, a schoolteacher or a police officer, I don't, I don't think is, I don't think is realistic.
What do you suggest?
Are you proposing that we let it be more dense?
So, when I've, when I've looked at housing in the, in the town, a lot of pre-existing housing is actually cheaper than what's going up.
Absolutely. But that was, you know, I bought my home 25 years ago, and I paid $170,000. Now, it's worth probably $500,000. I, I don't understand what you're talking about.
What I'm talking about is that unless we went into an affordable housing venture, say with the state, or a workforce housing venture or something like that, $400,000 is about the cheapest home that we've seen.
That's exactly right. And that's just the way it is. Everything costs more money now.
It's costing more. It's costing more.
I agree.
Yeah, building materials, whatever, it's costing more.
Well, that was $400 a square foot for a home, on average, is, you know, creating that.
Clearly, we're not going to solve the housing crisis this evening.
No.
Are there any items in this application that you feel comfortable voting on this evening? Or do you need more information?
I did want to mention one, one more thing about your special use permits. While I disagree with having across the board, we're going to give you, you know, allow you to violate our zoning rules across the board throughout your entire neighborhood. But if you do get in line with the setbacks and the density, but then you, you know, your inevitable 1%, you know, of your lots are, you know, may not be conforming, so if you needed flexibility on a handful of lots, you know, that's reasonable. But I think an across-the-board special use permit that is contrary to our zoning is inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. That's great feedback to look at that in more of a case-by-case basis as we work through the site plan.
I, I just want to comment from a planning perspective, that would be really difficult when we go to site plan for single-family dwellings to verify which lot is allocated which setback and to keep track of that. Thank you.
So, ladies and gentlemen, the question remains, is there anything on this application that you feel comfortable voting on this evening?
Commercial use, I'm good for the drive-through facilities. I don't know if you have any problems with the drive-through facilities.
We're happy to work with staff and hold another community meeting and defer.
And massage us a little bit?
And come back. We got some great feedback today.
Okay.
So, let us kind of do our work and massage and work with staff, hold another community meeting, get some more feedback, and then come before you all again.
And let us know when that is, if you would. We'd love to see that.
Well, you need, no, don't do that. It needs to be carried over to next month's meeting unless the applicant requests for, y'all have 100 days from tonight to act on this. They've expressed their willingness to take your comments into consideration and perhaps potentially make some changes, but you need to carry, you can't just defer it indefinitely. You have to go to a date certain. I would recommend you go to your next meeting.
Sure.
Unless the applicant advises the, the town planner that they need additional time, and then she can schedule that appropriately. But you just can't do it just generally.
We'll be in touch with Ms. Clary on our recent middle.
Okay. Do you think you can do it for next month?
When's the date of the cutoff for the June Planning Commission?
Depending on, maybe the 28th of, of May.
We can make the 28th work.
Do I need to make a motion that we defer this until the June 10th meeting pending recent middle of the plans?
Yes, including VDOT, a date of VDOT.
Would be appropriate motion is defer action on this matter until your next regularly scheduled June Planning Commission meeting.
And hopefully have VDOT recommendations as well, or we're not in control of that.
Well, we'll see. I mean, if, if that information is available, then that's fine. If they need more time, then they're going to advise Ms. Clary. Once again, the clock started ticking tonight.
Is that a motion, Dr. Pope?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Sir, a second, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
One last comment. On your advertisement in the Smithfield Times was like a second pop-up. Nobody could really see your ad, so that might be a problem with your turnout.
Again, we'll, I'll push out more invites next week, and we'll hold a community meeting ahead of the June date. We just wanted to get one in, because again, the more feedback we get, the better. So, thank you for the feedback, though.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick.
Chairwoman Hilligas, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Attorney Riddick.
Yes, sir.
I want to be clear. When we refer to proffers, proffers aren't limited to just schools, correct? It could be anything.
What, are you talking about cash proffers?
Yes. As far as capital improvement, what the town needs is capital improvement. You know, water system updates or sewer system updates, the pumping stations, streets, sidewalks.
They have to, they have to pay for their own infrastructure. That's, that's not even something to consider. But if they have impacts on our infrastructure, they have to pay for that too. But if you're talking about things like...
Replacing police cars, fire trucks, building outside walks.
Yes. That's, if it's in your capital improvement plan, you can, and it's directly attributable to this development, then you can accept it.
Not how it affects the whole town.
No, it's got to be, the, the impact has to be directly attributable to this development.
Hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is item six, 1,005 South Church Street. Ms. Clary, we have a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking entrance corridor overlay review and approval to erect an approximately 40.17 square-foot channel letter raceway sign for the business at 1005 South Church Street, which was formerly the 7-Eleven. It will feature a muted blue color with black backer and will be illuminated internally by white LEDs. They also need a Planning Commission waiver. This is to reface the 99 by approximately 123-inch two-sided face, which is on the existing detached, non-conforming sign. It will also feature a blue muted color and will be illuminated with an opaque white background. We do recommend that any approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining a signed permit and required fee payment. Thank you.
So, am I correct in assuming that this business is changing their business plan a bit from...
That is correct. In order to reopen, they must be in conformance with our zoning ordinance as, as it regards to recreational substance establishments.
Okay, thank you. So, anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Okay, now's your chance. Any comments from Planning Commission?
So, this sign is not in conformance as far as size, is that correct? But it's no, it's not going to be a new sign?
That is, it's not a new sign, it's a non, it's an existing, non-conforming sign.
It's going to stay just like this?
Yes, ma'am.
That we did approve.
Just the words are going to change.
Well, that's by agreement with their legal counsel. They understand they can't, they don't have a permit as a vape and tobacco shop anymore.
Right.
They've asked, they, they understand that they, their limitations, this is just additional information so you know, they understand that they, their limit, their operation is limited to a convenience store.
Like 7-Eleven?
Yeah.
They can still sell vape products as long as they comply with their shelf space regulations.
That's correct.
Yep. Any further discussion on this item? Chairwoman, obtain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented with staff recommendations on them, on the applicant obtaining a signed permit and required fee payments.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All right, we need to call for the questions, Ms. Clary.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Item number seven is another entrance corridor overlay review, Smithfield Shopping Plaza, I believe it is. Ms. Clary, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking approval to install a 144-square-foot Kroger channel sign featuring blue letters with a blue Fresh Cart logo and also a 17.5-square-foot pharmacy blue channel sign. This will actually replace the existing red pharmacy sign, and the Starbucks sign will remain. The applicant is also seeking approval for the two double-sided blue opaque flat signs with white lettering. They will be internally illuminated with white LEDs. We do recommend that approval is conditioned on the applicant submitting a signed permit application and the required fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Planning Commission comments, what say you?
So, we voted on signs for this storefront before, right? Just recently?
Yes, it's my understanding that they're just rebranding with the Fresh Cart logo.
Okay, so that's why, okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve as presented with the staff recommendations of the sign application and fee payment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Clary, call for the question, please. Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is another sign, it's another sign.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking entrance corridor overlay review for the installation of a 28.79 square-foot raceway sign with a Spice Hue raceway color. It will feature white letters on a black backer board and will be internally illuminated by white LEDs. We do recommend approvals contingent on a signed permit application and fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi.
Step right up, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Name's Doug Collins, address is Eight Langhorn Road, Newport News, Virginia.
Anything you want to add to Ms. Clary's summary?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Isn't there a monument sign already up there with the same thing, with the great clips and the... I'm not talking about on the building, but they put up a monument sign already.
The detached sign.
Right.
Yeah, this is for an attached.
And it looks like the same thing as far as the lettering.
The branding is consistent, yeah.
Big point?
The branding is consistent.
Yes.
This would just be on the building.
I have no problem with that. I recommend that, that we take the staff, the staff approval and as presented.
Contingent upon permit and fee payment?
Big point.
Contingent on permit and fee payment?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's a motion, sir?
Second.
All right, Ms. Clary, call for the question, please. Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item number 11, another ECO review at 18403 Cypress Crossing. Ms. Clary, do you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking approval for the installation of an eight-by-four LED internally illuminated monument sign. It will have a white opaque background with seven colors for the logo and words. The aluminum, aluminum sign cabinet will be painted white with a satin finish. White reflective vinyl numbers will be applied to the side, the street side of the base. They're also seeking a modification to their wall signage featuring blue mod wash at the entrance and exit of the car wash with the mod wash and logo facing Cypress Crossing. We do recommend approvals contingent on the signed permit application and fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Roger Rodriguez with Timmons Group, 7053 Celebration Park Avenue, Richmond, Virginia. We're in agreement with staff's conditions, and we're here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant, please?
I just want to remind all Planning Commissioners to speak into your microphones, please.
No, I don't have any.
Do I have a motion?
I will move that we approve as staff has recommended contingent on the submission of the signed permit fee.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Ms. Clary, call for the question, please. Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next item, conditional rezoning to special use permits. This is a discussion item. Ms. Clary, do you have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning to highway retail commercial. This is to facilitate the construction of a convenience store with fueling station islands and then two additional undetermined retail users. These uses are also in line with the future land use map, as the current designation is corridor mixed use, which provides for primary commercial uses. It will be a 6,139-square-foot convenience store and will feature 4,170-square-foot fueling station canopy with six double-sided self-serving fueling stations. In addition to traditional convenience store offerings, there will be a made-to-order food menu, coffee bar, and smoothies. There will be indoor and outdoor seating. It will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It does have, this site does have existing access servicing Sherwin-Williams, and will also include a right-in, right-out entrance shared amongst the subdivided parcels and a pedestrian path along Route 10 for connectivity. They are requesting a special use permit for a drive-through facility at the convenience for, at the convenience store for made-to-order food. A second special use permit for the waiver of parking and loading. This is so that they could exceed the maximum number of parking spaces allowed by seven. This would be providing 44 spaces instead of the maximum of 37 spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is just a discussion item, so let's hear your thoughts. Oh, the applicants like to speak on behalf of the application? Before we get started?
Just briefly, Randy Royal, Kimbley Horn Associates, 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Tammy covered everything pretty much. It's not showing on there, but our current plan, we're trying to install a right-turn D-cell in front of the Sherwin-Williams. That's what VDOT came back with. It's off-site, which is part of the problem. We've got to get right away from Sherwin-Williams to do that work, but that's something we're looking into based upon what VDOT has told us. We have done, and I need to get it to you, Tammy, we've got a cultural resources study that you asked us to do on the property. Nothing found, some arrowheads and things like that, but nothing significant. And we're working with the Isle of Wight Museum, the curator there, on that. Still working through things with VDOT. I've also got Interstate Realty, Mike Hider from here, I think you may have the Sheets, Todd Casados here from Sheets. I'd like for them to speak to you. Mike's kind of giving you the... Mike's kind of giving you the brochure, just to kind of tell you, they're new developers that you probably haven't seen before and like you hear the quality work. I'm the engineer, I can answer, I think, any questions you have, but let me help Mike speak briefly. Thank you.
Yes, my pleasure to be here. Jay Michael, Niderfer, 2151 Volunteer Parkway, Bristol, Tennessee. I handed out brochures, just, it's just an easy way to tell you or show you that we're more than qualified to do a project of this size. We're, been told we're the largest retail developer in the state of West Virginia. It's not, calls them six five, two seventy, if that was said. You're supposed to laugh now. Yeah, this, this is, uh, we've done probably a dozen Sheets convenience stores. My favorite, and they've been the players you could work with. Just my partner and, and my construction manager met with Tammy several weeks ago, just kind of introducing. And we've been working on this, jeez, for about a year, just to get to this point. It's been a lot of frustration on our part, but we're, we're happy to be at this point. There's a lot of challenges with the site, but we're committed, we're dedicated. I've got some great property owners that's been working with me, being patient with us, but, uh... It's been a challenge, but I'm, I'm happy to, I'd rather defer any kind of site questions to Randy, but I'm happy to answer any questions about our company. We are, we are, I will say, in South Charleston, West Virginia. We're breaking ground on 500,000 square foot shopping center. It'll be anchored by Kroger Marketplace and a Menards Home Improvement, soft goods, out parcels, things of that nature. So, that's, that's encompassing about 60 acres of land. This is seven acres. We, we, we want to start with Sheets and be as selective as we can on what we do on the other two parcels, but we felt like this would be a good anchor for the property.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, you know my question. My question, the status of this right in, right out, particularly in front of Sherwin-Williams. And, and where I'm confused at is I thought along roads, the, the town or the county had easement for expansion. Why is that not coming into play? Is, am I missing something here?
No, sir, it's, it's a good point, very good point. Most people wouldn't know that. There's only about 12 feet though, you can kind of see it there. 12 foot of right of way, which is basically the grass area outside the pavement. So, a new lane is going to take 12 feet. You might say, well, that works, right? No, we've got to have a roadside ditch. So, at a minimum, I need space to put the drainage in. Really, probably another 12 feet, but they've had to go to Sherwin-Williams to obtain an off-site easement for that.
Okay, okay. The other thing is, you're putting in a pedestrian path also. And I don't know if you've been in contact with the county, but sweet grass, I think it's having one too. Without this space in front of Sherwin-Williams, are you going, you won't be able to connect sweet grass to the sidewalk, the path that you'll be putting in. Have you had any conversation with the county for any assistance in that matter?
Well, it's Mike's.
To try to connect those paths.
I was going to say, that's, it's, it's one of those things, Mr. Bryan, that's, you kind of build them in pieces, eventually they get connected. That's, that's been a, people have a hard time with that, but you can only deal with the property owner that you're dealing with. And you can get, you can't make people do things on other people's property.
Understood.
So, you kind of, you, you, the county requires the pedestrian trail and with the, and of course, it would be a good idea if they connected to the same thing within the time, but it'll probably take care of itself in the next few years, so that's about all you can do.
Okay.
That's a good point, and Mr. Riddick's exactly right, and I've done this a long time. You get, you get what you can, and then if there's gaps, it's a much easier project to go in and get this little piece and this little piece and connect it all up. But yeah, we would have to get more right of way to do more work across Sherwin-Williams in there. There's also a concern that I have with the turn lane itself, the, if you guys know that area, there's, there's a drawl that goes through there, ditch just beyond, it's, it's right at the right hand side of the, in there, most likely wetlands. And unfortunately, the Corps of Engineers and DEQ, they typically don't care about road improvements. So, I'm not certain, I haven't talked to them yet, as to what they're going to let us do. Whether they're going to let us fill some of that area in there, again, off site, to get the turn lane, much less a pedestrian connection in. So, a lot of issues there that we, we, we can't commit to stuff off site. We're absolutely doing the stuff in the front that Tammy told us, that's, that's the requirements to go in there. But yeah, it, it may get connected in the future.
And the commercial plots next to that, going to the left, how far are they from that O'Reilly's Auto Parts place?
I guess you can pull up.
Do they connect? Do they, they, there's a gap in between there too, yes?
Yeah, the Edwards house is in, if, if you go to the left...
Yeah.
There's, the Philip Edwards house is still there.
Okay. Now, I'm thinking in the future, with a pathway from Sweetgrass through here, all the way down to that, well, that would be, uh... Is that Cypress Creek? Across, across the street from Auto Advance. I'm looking at a walkway from Sweetgrass all the way to that intersection down to the, uh, shopping center, Kruger Shopping Center. That's what I'm thinking in terms of, how do we get there?
One piece of the.
But that's, that's not something that...
One piece of the town.
Yes, yes, I don't expect.
You all have our piece.
Yes.
There was one thing I forgot to mention, I do have a claim to fame here. Many years ago, I put in the Lowe's on Mercury Boulevard. Happy to see that I saw the sign, I hope they're still open there, but that was probably in the late eighties or nineties.
Newport News?
I said Newport News, I meant Hampton, Mercury, Mercury Boulevard in Hampton, the Lowe's.
The Lowe's?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the power, the power plant, yes. Yeah, it's still there.
Our company did that deal.
Yes, okay.
I have a couple of quick questions before we wrap up on this. You mentioned the turn lane, but VDOT had 30 some odd other comments on the TIA, if I'm not mistaken. So, have you guys submitted a new TIA, or are you going to address these 32 comments?
We have them pretty much addressed. I wanted to have this discussion with you guys tonight, see if there was anything else before we resubmitted to VDOT. But yeah, we're prepared to do that.
On your drawing that in the northeast side of the property, that's, that's not a car wash right there, is it? You're not putting a drive through car wash in there, are you?
No, where, I, I don't know where you're pointing, but...
That like loop, loop that has no function up there at the top?
Well, the function, the function, yeah, it's for the drive through, to get people out of the way to, to line up. There's a drive through at the back of the building.
Okay. And then, I, I, are you having fuel only, or is there going to be charging stations here too?
Right now, it's just fuel, no charging. And, and yeah, I've got the Sheets guy here. And, and before, I, I want, I'm, failed to mention one thing, the utilities, we're trying to get that figured out. We've been talking to Michael Stallings about it, because we're right on the line. There's, there's stuff right across the line, but it's Isle of Wight. They want to let us connect to Isle of Wight. So, there's been talk of not just this site, but how do you serve this, this site and the stuff around it, which are in Smithfield? How to serve the utilities, that's, that's got to be solved.
Good evening, Todd Casado, Sheets Incorporated, Senior Real Estate Sites Market Manager. Right now, it's, we, we have the six fuel tanks there, we have 12 fueling positions. We have no plans for EV, electronic vehicles right now at this site. Typically, what we've done with EV is when we open a site or once we get into permitting and we know, we get through all this and we actually know we have a site and we're going to permit and design it, we'll start sharing that, the site with our EV partners, which are Tesla, EV Go, Electrify America and Iona. So, they're the kind of four big players right now that are installing EV chargers and, and building out the network. So, we show our new sites to them and then we sublease property to them, they come on and build it. It's getting a lot better, it used to be very segregated of, you can only charge this type of vehicle here, you can charge that here. Now, they have different converter plugs and things, so we have a better partnership network now than we used to. So, we will share this with them, it's just a little early in the process to have one of them commit to us, but it is something we try to do and share with them on our sites.
Similarly, any plans for non ethanol fuel?
Yeah, we, we have a, a large fuel offering, ethanol free certainly by the water, yeah.
We have a lot of farmers and a lot of boaters.
Yeah, that's part of, some of the parking regulation, the parking, you know, we just like to build a big site where there's room for vehicles. We like to have big curbs where you can pull up with a trailer attached to it. So, that's, we, we're asking for a parking variance just because we expect to be busy and want to have enough parking spots for customers and employees.
That's my, that's all I have.
Thank you.
My question is, is this parcel they're buying is, this is, you said seven acres, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Was this just what they had purchased? Who, is this all under one tax ID number all the way back to Philip Edwards and they're only buying a portion of it? Or is they just bought what Pamuco had bought years and years and years ago and they're, so who does, who owns north of them to the, you know, that land up there?
That's part of the Edwards.
Edwards property still.
Yes.
My problem with this site and what's going on here is what's going to happen to those developments down there on the far end? I suspect they're all going to be commercial. And what I'm trying to figure out is when I turn at the stoplight and decide I don't want to go to Sheets, I want to go to Chick-fil-A down by the Edwards house, how am I going to get down there? This, you're going through the parking lot, to me, you need to have a service road in the back, very similar to what's across the street with your competitor with Wawa. They've got a service road in the back that connects all the way back to the veterinarian clinic down on the other side to allow traffic flow across the back of the property. I have a feeling that whatever goes on parcel one and two and whatever's going to go down the line, there's not, there may be some right turns in and right turns out, but we're not going to have any other access to a stoplight except right there. And so, the problem is, you've got to connect that north end to this south end.
That's, you said.
Yeah, but you're going to have traffic zooming through your parking lot to try to get to other parcels down the line. And it needs to be a dedicated road space, as close to those wetlands as you can get them in the back and then develop your site from there. I just don't see how this is going to work to connect the north end of this property to the south end of this property.
This, this is not as much a, if you, if you had a major shopping center, grocery store in the back, lots more square footage, that service road might be busier. Mike hasn't figured out the users there yet, but I don't anticipate that it's going to be users where there's going to be a heck of a lot of traffic. I was hesitant too, and Sheets was like, we, we don't have a problem with people coming through, they'll probably stop and get some gas after they've gone through the others.
They may not care, but it's going to be a safety issue with people going through there at whatever speed they wish to go through there.
You, you put traffic calming measures through.
Well, I, I hear you, but I think it needs more connectivity to the north end because nobody is going to be able to go back towards Suffolk and Carrollton coming out of this whole plot of land unless you do a right turn in and go down a U-turn down at the Miller Mark Gas Station. You're going to have to do U-turns after U-turns after U-turns because this whole traffic strip is not ideal. You're getting ready to change our office to a right in, right out, everybody's going to have to go down and do a U-turn at Church Street to come back to Suffolk. That's all happening according to VDOT and what I've been told. The only access you're going to have to be able to go left here is you're going to have to come out at this intersection and everything north of this property is going to have to connect back. I don't know what's going up there, maybe it's not y'all's problem, but we've got to have, in my mind, you've got to have a service road in the back to be able to connect all the properties down from the, from the Philip Edwards farm all the way back down to, to this.
There's also another strip right here, you see it? That Philip Edwards owns that.
I got it, I hear you.
He, he could run, he could put stuff all over here.
He has, he has an easement to the road right there to do that.
Right.
That's why we did it that way.
So, that can be a dedicated road right there, this is intended just primarily to serve these three lots.
Yeah, but I think my job as a planner is to plan for the future and everything north of this has got to connect to this site. I will talk to Mr. Edwards and figure out what he's doing with this, but in my mind, you've got to have a service road in the back. And I'm also asking, why is the store faced this way? To me, it should be turned 90 degrees. You know, for me, I, I, it seems like the front of your store is facing Sherwin-Williams instead of the road. But to me, I'd rather look at the gas pumps and all that stuff as, as a traditional way of looking at this than the way it's organized. But that's just me personally, but I'm just thinking of a traffic nightmare of how you're going to get the people in, out of this, out of these, all, out of all of this commercial development that's going to occur, how are you going to get these people out of that north end?
Yeah, if I, if I could comment on Sheets and kind of our design thoughts on this site. So, we have a big tower entrance at the bottom right of our building, which will face the intersection. So, right here is our tower entrance. This is our restaurant entrance right here, and we have restaurant seating here outdoor. We also have a restaurant indoor seating in this section. So, this side of our building and this side of our building are, are good sides of the building. They both have a, a very street friendly presence. Why we like turning it this way, this orientation is, um, our drive through comes back here, orders comes through here and then they have a pretty easy way to make their decision. So, we give a lot of thought into internal traffic flow as well. This is a really wide drive aisle in the back. This is mostly going to be employee parking or EV is typically where we put it. This is our drive through order lane where you order off a touchscreen. So, really, this part of our store is really quiet. This is, this is really serves as a service road, where most of our action is going to be coming in.
It may or may not be quiet depending on what's going on in the north end, and then you're asking the drive through people to cut across traffic. You know, when they come through, they place their order, race up to the window. I, I, I just don't agree with the design. I think it's, I think it's a bad flow. I think even though y'all aren't responsible for the north end, we have to be responsible for the north end. South, yeah, north end, but yeah. So, I, I just, just don't think driving across parking lots is the best way.
I still believe, and we've developed over five million probably square feet, I still believe with what we set up with the main entrance and he has the capabilities of extending that road, because whoever does that is going to do that. We've already teed it up for that, we're just trying to handle the internal parts of this. The traffic can go, just extend that road, go right behind our site.
Other comments?
Dr. Pope, you're, I mean, you're really talking about going potentially in the future, like all the way down to Canterbury Lane, behind Advance, auto parts and the like, that...
There's no connection out there.
I know, well, I'm thinking about the future wise, that, you're talking about eventually all that highway frontage, you know, potentially be commercial space and service road running along behind it to Canterbury or something?
I think there is a potential that it, that will all be commercial space at some time.
Other questions for the applicant, further discussion on this item? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, hope you got some good feedback this evening. Next item is a public hearing. Text amendment, Article 3. A, 3. E, 3. G and 13, Town staff is the advocate. Ms. Clarity, do you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a proposed text amendment to our articles that feature group homes. We are removing them as a special use permit from community conservation attached residential, residential office zoning districts. And then we're also updating the definition of group home. This would be in line with Virginia State Code. We also are proposing a text amendment to clarify, do you want to handle these separately? a text amendment to clarify, do you want to handle these separately or together as one?
Whatever you think.
We're also proposing a text amendment for duplexes. We wanted to clarify that duplexes, that a single duplex unit would be permitted on one parcel. By doing that, we also wanted to increase the minimum lot area from 6,000 square, minimum lot area to 6,000 square feet for interior, 7,000 square feet for corner, and the minimum lot width 60 and 70 for interior and corner. We are also including the definition that would state one individual duplex unit on one platted lot. We do suggest a favorable recommendation to town council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clary. Questions or comments? Oh, public hearing. Hey, it's public hearing. Let's open it up. Anyone sign up to speak? No one signed up to speak? We will close the public hearing. Okay, now, questions, discussion. Don't get shy now.
My question about this text amendment is, when I look down the downtown neighborhood community conservation ordinances, I don't see that we added group home under there. Did we, are we not, under group home, it'd been stricken from, is that about right use or are we stricken that they can't get a special use permit either?
It, it is a by right use, so it was removed from the special use permit.
So does that mean it needs to be put into the permitted uses?
It is a permitted use by state code.
Yes.
But we don't have to specifically say whatever the name of the thing was, group homes?
They're treating it now as a residence for a family. That's the way they're treating them.
I got it, but under the permitted uses, it says et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but does not group home not have to be listed?
No, not in this instance. It removes it. It removes the requirement. Well, the state was looking at this as a restriction by having a special use permit on a group home. They were looking at it as a restriction.
Correct. They, they treat them, you can't impose any additional conditions as what you would on a single-family dwelling.
Right.
I'm just asking, how come it's not added as a permitted use? Because there's nothing there.
I mean-
They can come in and buy the, buy a home just like a family could.
Make it a permitted use, that's fine.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, because when you read this, you're going to think, is it permitted or is it not?
They treat them like, they treat them like single family, but that's fine. We, that's a very good point, that, but we'll just move that to-
Yeah, I agree. It's a little confusing. I mean, if we're going to list a bunch of permitted uses, then-
We'll make a group home a permitted use.
Maybe by right, but I think it needs to say you can do this with somebody coming, is coming to read it.
That's fine.
I don't know. I'm just thinking, are we not permitting it even though we're-
No, it's, it's for permitted use. Make that number 13 under permitted uses.
Now, just to clarify, are we making it a permitted use across all zoning districts?
What's the post there?
It should be our residential uses.
If, if it's, the state code, we're going to do whatever the state code says.
It just says no conditions more restrictive than those imposed on residents occupied by persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption shall be imposed on such facility.
Well, then it's only permitted in districts that are, that permit single-family residences.
Yes.
That, that is correct. I just wanted to clarify, to make sure, because it was listed as SUP items in just those districts. So the, just to clarify that, we're going to add it as a permitted use in all residential permitted districts.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I will make a motion that we recommend the town council approval of this text amendment for group homes. Are we doing them individually?
Sure, with the condition?
With the conditions of adding it to the residential ordinances.
You have a motion, sir, second?
Second.
Player call for the question, please. Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now the next item. What are your thoughts? Thoughts on duplexes, ladies and gentlemen?
I think it's semantics. I don't know what we're-
Yes.
Yeah.
We're clarifying, right now our zoning ordinance requires the duplex to be, to be on essentially two parcels. And this text amendment would allow one duplex unit on one parcel, so that there would be one ownership. You would not have two owners owning each side of a duplex unit.
That's all right. Yeah, that's all right.
So two, there wouldn't be two owners, one on each side?
That is, that is correct. It would be one owner because the one duplex unit would be located on one parcel that had two living areas. Right now, the way that our zoning ordinance reads is each side of the duplex must be on its own individually platted lot, which means you would enter, encounter a situation where two different owners owned a building, and the concern is if one decides not to maintain their roof, their structure, they are attached. And so this would allow one duplex unit on one parcel with one owner of the entire duplex unit.
So how does the second person own?
The second person's a renter?
Correct.
Or they're both renters?
I understand what you're driving at. Why should, why wouldn't we make it either-or? Make both an option for the duplex? Because duplexes, very often, they share what's called a common, it's common law, and even common law agreements, where they, the issues that you're talking about, the maintenance issues are governed by a written agreement between the parties as required by the situation. You, you make a very good point in doing this, but it seems to me I have both options available.
Yeah, because currently I share a wall with my neighbor's garage, but it's her side and our side. Lot line goes right down the middle. But I, but we're not a duplex living situation.
I think those, the villas that they described, that they want to put in the promontory would fall into this scenario, right? They were two, the ones that were two-unit, two-story villas, right? Would those, those would fall into this scenario?
So if it's a, if it's a duplex as opposed to the townhouse, that is-
Right, a two-unit villa is what they're calling it. They're not calling it a townhouse. They're also not calling it a duplex, but the illustration of it was two units.
It's two units, yeah. And, and that's been proposed other places as well, but that would-
When we currently-
Right, that would have required a special use permit to allow more density. But now, if the duplex can be on one lot, doesn't require the extra density. Right? Am I thinking about it the right way?
But it would still be, I'm, I'm going to defer to you because it would still be two units. It would just be one duplex.
Yeah, but they're, they're, the question is whether the line goes through the middle of the house or not. And there's good reason to do both. So why wouldn't we do both? Or, or at least permit both? I mean, it makes every, all the sense in the world. It's a duplex, and the line went right down the middle, and each pro, each unit owner is separate, and they share a common wall. That's very common all over the world. And they, it's governed, the issue about maintenance and all that sort of thing are governed by a, a party wall agreement, which you wouldn't need if you had, if it was just two units on one lot. But there's a lot more flexibility in the other arrangement. I mean, there's, there's duplexes on Wilson Road, and they, they're, they're sitting on individual lots. They've done long, long time ago.
We were just clarifying the, the way that the zoning ordinance currently reads, it flip-flops between those two, and so we were trying to-
And I'm not saying that the ordinance is not, like, it doesn't need some intention. It seems to me, though, the smart thing to do is to make either-or an option, depending on how somebody wants to develop their property.
You're saying either-or as far as the land is concerned?
Yeah, if you had, if you want to put up a duplex, and you wanted to put it on one piece of land, that's what this would permit.
Right.
If you wanted to put up a duplex, but you wanted it to be divided down the middle, and you had two lots, you'd be able to do that too. Seems to me.
You're suggesting we keep what we have but add this? We can add this but keep what we have?
I think so.
It makes sense, because I'm trying to understand, how would you just split the property? How would, how would the occupants manage the property and split the property if it's all just one?
They could.
Exactly.
Except, well, they could, but they'd have to form a condominium.
Okay.
They'd have to own, they'd have to convert the single property to a condominium. Each person owns the other side. Condominiums, people think of condominiums as a certain kind of structure. Condominiums are just the way you own something. And so I don't know why we wouldn't, I don't know why we wouldn't just have more tools in the box instead of less.
I agree.
I mean, I, I'm sure she's right. We have all kinds of quirks in our ordinance that she keeps finding, and she's really smart, and she tries to address them. And I'm not saying this is wrong, but I'm saying I don't know why we can't do both.
There's a home in Cypress Creek that is a home for the family, and the in-laws have their own attached, it's all under one roof, separated by a common wall, separate entrances, but I'm sure that's zoned as a single-family residential home in Cypress Creek. I'm sure it's not a duplex nor a condominium or anything else.
No.
So I don't, that one's just kind of built that way, and nobody's probably ever recognized that it's a, because you can't tell it's, you can't tell it's got two separate entrances, and you can't tell that there's an in-law suite with its own bedroom, family room, kitchen, everything else separate. And it's not in an attic, it's not over a garage, it's part of the house.
What's your point, ladies and-
So do we want to revise it and table it and revise it? I mean, we've already had a public hearing, so we have to-
You won't have to have another public hearing.
I'd like to see both things written down.
I, I would too.
Side by side, top to bottom.
I don't, I don't think we should have either-or. Like, it should be both.
Can we table it so we can see how, is this how it's originally written, the way it's scratched out, or is there another way? Where you said it's another, it's another entry in the ordinance.
The, the definition of the duplex dwelling is the red-lined version. What's located in the ordinance deals with the lot minimums and the lot widths. And so right now, for the duplex, it's 40 and 60 feet for the width, and then 4,000 and 5,000 square feet for the lot area.
Is there a motion to defer this until June?
So what she's doing is bumping the size?
Yeah.
So you're putting both parts of the building on one larger lot?
I mean, I'm just doing it in my head, but, and we'll have to talk to Ms. Clary about this and see what there's in sort of-
I'll motion there.
I was just saying, I'm just looking at this and doing it in my head. I'll have to talk with her about this to see if there's any setback issues we need to deal with. But it seems to me, two-family attached residential unit, residential use in which the dwelling units are located on either one individual platted lot or two individual platted lots, either of which shall share a common wall. I mean, that's, that might work, but we'll come up with something that gives you an either-or.
Okay. So we have a motion to defer until June?
Make a motion to defer to June.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Would that allow, if I own it under one roof, would I allow me to use the second space as an Airbnb 365?
Good question.
You could use it for 104 calendar nights in a year-
104 calendar nights.
-without needing the special use permit.
And make sure that I'm not going to be renting it out of an Airbnb for the, forever either.
Right. Very good.
Yeah, this almost makes it an investment property.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next issue is the density discussion. Ms. Clary, you want to, you were, Mr. Cutler, run through your attachments?
Yes, thank you. Planning Commission had requested the additional PDF of the downtown area. We also included the densities when you calculate the minimum lot areas, what that breaks out into for each zoning district.
Okay, it's a discussion, ladies and gentlemen. What concerns you?
Well, I've said all along, this doesn't seem to make sense to me. You know, you can see by just the calculations that's been done, that our neighborhood residential's density's two, it lot size 15,000, which comes out to three. You know, it's, none of it has ever made sense to me. And so I guess these are the numbers that look at all the different scenarios under residential that don't make any sense. And so I've been saying that all along. And so when we discussed this a couple of years ago, three years ago, we had a commission at that time that said we're going to be more restrictive but a lot more flexible. And now that has shifted as of January to we're going to be more interpretive and less, and less flexible. And now this has come into all these discussions, whether it's the Promontory or Vinnie's Lot or the Grange or whatever you want to talk about. But the decision we made three years ago, where we were to keep it more restrictive but be flexible, so that we have say in these developments about what we're going to allow and what we're not. But now that's coming down to is just being very restrictive.
Yes.
So I don't know how you, how you feel. That's what we were trying to talk about in February.
Right. And, and I actually thought that we had made headway with that, but didn't seem to be that one.
I don't think we made any decisions in February.
No decisions, but it sounded like the conversation was good. But then it didn't.
They told me I talked a lot. That was the only decision that was made.
Who said that to you, Dr. Pope? He's talking again, right?
Well, I've got it stored away in my memory bank. It'll stay there.
I'll bring it up the way I brought it up the last time, the way I brought it up earlier a little bit today. If you want to keep the traffic down and you want to have walkable town, you increase your density within town. So your downtown residential should be more dense, not less dense. You want more people, you want more houses, you want it closer together, it's walkable, you can get to your neighbors, you can do what you want to do. As you go out and you hit the suburban areas, then you make it less dense. So you have to understand Mallory Point, that's a little wider out, that's out in the outskirts of town. Okay, you've got a little more room, go ahead and do it. But if you're in town and you're on those downtown streets, there's no reason to not utilize the space you have available in town. So, and the numbers here show that 10 or so per acre on the most part for just about everything, so.
Well, I think it shows the density of what's researched, but you can look at the blue blocks and see around it that there's also places that weren't. So if you only look for what you're looking for, then that might be what you find. But I think that you can have walkability of the historic district and lower traffic without increasing density as well. I don't think those things are exclusive. That increasing density is going to reduce traffic and make it more walkable. I don't think anybody has ever proposed building lots- I don't think anybody's, has ever proposed building lots the size of, what is it, Osprey Point, kind of down past the YMCA? You know, with the, a couple acre lots, you know, nobody's proposing that in the lots in the historic district, but-
Goose Creek, excuse me.
Goose Hill?
Goose Hill, yeah, excuse me. But five homes per acre, point two acre lots is, you know, that's already, in, in my opinion, I think there's also some perspective on growth and what growth is appropriate and what the citizens of the town desire. You know, I think that has to be a factor, certainly in the decisions that I make as elected by the citizens and appointed by elected officials. You know, sometimes it might make sense on an individual basis, but to think about having talked to thousands of citizens about what they wanted to see with, in town, as we were faced with growth, you know, makes decision making challenging as well.
Other thoughts?
My thought is that for the downtown residential area that has been mostly built out for the past hundred years, spotty, you know, a hundred year old home, sixty year old home. And how big the lots are, don't have a whole lot of rhyme or reason now, I'm sure they did back then. And I understand what Darren's saying is that, well, you can see that there's lots right next to these that are all jammed up together and then there's bigger ones next to it. Well, yeah, but look at all those that are close together. Right here on page two, one point seven nine acres, there's sixteen homes there. And, you know, it's, it's not like the street is going to burn down and then somebody's going to want to come in with a big residential area, you know, to rebuild development. At this point in time, we have very little to build on downtown. And I think that having the downtown area more representative of what's been there and what's built down there is the way to go.
Well, if you looked at these pictures and you said, what's inside the blue box is, is certainly over five. And then if you went farther and you made the assumption, well, what's outside the blue box must be less than five, okay? Then you might just look at that and say, well, it looks like about an average of five across the downtown residential historic district. If you use that logic, or it might be less than five, because there's certainly, you know, if you look at the page one picture, you know, only a fraction, a quarter of the spaces in the blue box, so three quarters of that space is perhaps over five.
I just want to clarify, for net developable acreage, the wetlands is excluded from the calculation, so you can't include anything that, that contains a certain number of slopes and right of way.
Yeah, that's fine. Similarly, you know, if you extended that blue box out to those couple of big lots on, farther towards the end, well, if you change your, the volume, the N of your statistics, your statistics now change. So if you change your sample set and you make that blue box bigger, well, that number starts to go down, that number of homes per acre.
But if you make it the other way-
Move it the other way and they're all getting smaller. Come across the street here and they're all smaller.
Look at the size of these lots compared to these, right?
Understood, but look at these compared to these. Look at these compared to these. You're right, you can do the whole thing, but the point is-
The point is, the whole thing has not been done.
Right, but the point is, is there are more than enough examples of the density within town that is a lot greater than five.
And there are likely an equivalent number of examples greater than five.
I don't think, no. I don't think there's likely- If you look at where you live and where I live, it's very dense and that's the character of the neighborhood. And what we need to be building in the future is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
So you're telling me that across the road on Kerry Street on page three, you got that blue box and across the street from it, or if you opened it up to those larger lots behind it, you can't say that you choose some boxes and that represents the entire downtown district without doing the study of the entire downtown district? I mean, I don't think that that's a, I don't think that's a fair assumption to look at some selected statistics.
But what you're trying to say is, that's the average and now we're never going to go above the average, which means anything that's more dense than the average, you could never build.
That's actually not what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is, we don't have an accurate presentation of the density. That's what I'm trying to say.
We have an accurate representation of the density in areas of town.
Which is all we're looking at.
And you're saying that there are others that are less. I got there are others that are less, but if you're going to say you have to take all of it to come up with an average number, then you're never going to have anything more dense than the average. In order to have an average, you're going to have stuff above and stuff below. You're saying we're never going to have anything above ever again, because we're now going to set it at five, which is the average of everything in town.
No, that's not what I said.
Okay, then explain what you said.
I mean, what I said was that we're not using the complete data that we have. Now, I will say-
If you use the complete data, you would get an average.
Yeah, I agree.
And if you set it at the average, you never get anything denser than the average.
And I didn't suggest setting it at the average.
Well, that's what we've been discussing though, is what the number is and where the number is set.
Yeah, I think we're, what I'm hearing, your mind is going to, you can't just count the small lots, you got to count the big lots.
Well, yeah, you got to count all of it. You have to use all of your available data.
But there's no more big lots available. So now you'd be talking about, I mean, yes, there's a big lot next to the Elites. I don't even know who owns that.
They do.
They do? Did they buy it? Okay. But this little parcel that we have at the end of my street was, anyway, my feeling is, you take what's already on the street and you want to build something similar to it across the street, why wouldn't you?
In that logic, I don't know why we would have given any waivers on density to any previous developers then. If we wanted to repeat the density that we have, why would we have ever let them go above what we already had in town? You know, we have Red Point Heights, we have Cypress Creek, all beautiful dense, all beautiful low-density developments, but we've allowed developers to come in here and pitch and deliver on high-density developments for the reason of the needs of housing in town. Because if we went by that logic of what exists is what we're going to continue to build, we would not have done that.
What is high density?
It's an eye of the beholder.
Exactly. Swelling to the state's high density?
This whole conversation is exactly the conversation that was had years ago when all these densities were set and the, the remedy was special use permits, because it allowed the, the governing body to make individual decisions. But if you're going to say you can't have special use permits, except in very rare circumstances, you got to come up with a number. And it's almost impossible to do. And that's why everybody wonders, Dr. Pope said it a few minutes ago. He said that was the mindset in developing the ordinance years ago. But if you throw that logic in the trash can, your ordinance doesn't work anymore. If you're just going to say, you can't have a special use permit, we're not going to grant them, you have to stay within our densities, except in rare cases, the ordinance doesn't work anymore, because it was designed that way.
I don't, I, I disagree with you. I think we saw last week with the cottages, a perfect example of working together to create a development and two special use permits got approved and two were removed by the developer to meet the desires of the town.
It, it works in certain, no, no, you're right. In certain circumstances it will work, but in others, it simply doesn't. But I mean, the, I mean, I'm just telling you how it was designed. If you don't like that, you need to change it. You need to figure out a way to do it in a different way. Because that's, that was the logic behind this. We, we had, we had land planners that came in here and said, because Smithfield is, and your point about development is, all those developments have occurred in different stages of deva, of, of society. While I said this, you weren't here, but back in February, you know, it used to be a, a one acre lot was the holy grail. Well, that's not what anybody wants anymore. I mean, that's just not, the market doesn't sustain that because of the cost of the land and the cost of building the road necessary to service it and the infrastructure. And so density has made, unfortunately, that's, that, the increased density is what developers, and that's a bad word, but developers-
Well, but that's what the market has brought us to.
It is, because you, they do what's necessary in order to, they're in the business of selling houses and they have to sell houses that people can afford.
Right. They have to respond to the needs of the market. That's how it works.
And that's how it works. And so we don't have one acre lots anymore. Nobody offers those. Just can't.
But we don't have affordable new construction either.
Wait. The definition of affordable-
You can if you don't have, if you have more density.
The definition of affordable changes all the time. You, you know, it used to be, we had this whole discussion, we went through, remember the, the affordable housing, when John Graham was going through all those gyrations and we were coming up with ordinances on making people do that? And then in two thousand and seven or whatever, eight, the market crashed and all of a sudden, nobody talked about affordable housing, because you know what? It was everywhere. You could go, well, you couldn't develop a lot as cheaply as you could go and acquire units. And so that whole discussion went away and nobody ever talked about it again. And then we're back in a situation where interest rates are higher and the costs are higher and now, you know-
Again, it's the cycle of the market.
It's the cycle of the market and we're back at that again. We're back where we were in two thousand and five and six.
All you have to do is look at the history of Cypress Creek. That's all you got to do. When Cypress Creek was proposed, the standard there was, we want two, three, four acres. We're going to put a huge McMansion on here. That's what it was, that's what Cypress Creek was designed for when it was first approved. That went to the wayside. After the two thousand and eight housing crash, all of that went to the wayside. And now you've got different types of homes out there and they're not trying to buy two or three acres to build a home. And no developer is doing that. Cypress Creek was sold to another developer. I think Cypress Creek has been sold to three different developers and each one is bringing a different product and a smaller product than what Cypress Creek was originally designed for. It's the market. The market is changing it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody's suggesting two or three acre lots. And for what, for the record, you know, the SEO existing density document, I don't, I don't have any issues with the density numbers. If anything, it, it actually, I think, looks pretty good and demonstrates, I think, that they weren't random numbers. And, because if they were, then that eighteen point two townhouses for attached residential, you know, would have been a really bad decision and they went with eight instead. But I don't have any issues with those. If I was going to change something, I would actually change the lot sizes to, on some of them, to get them closer to the lot density. But I wouldn't change the maximum density.
Any further discussion besides that?
Only other thing, reviewing this, only other thing that was sort of glaring to me, and I couldn't figure out why, like the Promontory, for example, in their very first presentation to us, was why did they come in with a side yard setback of six feet? And that's because it's in our attached cluster residential at six feet. I think that needs to change to ten. I think we need to ask for an ordinance change on that right now. Draft it up and get rid of that six feet, because I didn't catch that six feet and I'm never going to vote for six feet, so why keep it six feet?
That's in the cluster?
It's in the cluster, you know, it's in the suburban residential cluster development side, side setback is six feet, where the downtown neighborhood residential sideline setback is ten. So why are we at six on that? Not, you know, so when I looked at his original presentation and thought, wow, where'd you get six from? It's awfully aggressive where this, where he got it from. So it doesn't need to be six in my mind, that needs to be ten. So for me, that's an ordinance change that we need to think about for the next meeting and change it right away.
Agree. I agree with that.
Okay.
And my only other thing, and I don't know where I picked this up in the reading, but what's our definition of elderly? You know, when we say elderly developments, fifty-five and over, sixty-five and over, seventy-five and over, who's defining elderly? Is that a state definition, a federal definition? What's doing this?
The, there's a, there's a fifty-five and older standard that a lot of developers come in with and based on that, they, they restrict their developments to occupancy by that demographic. And basically, it's, it removes the issue of school impact and that's why they've done it. And so the standard, I think, is fifty-five and older.
And again, that's a market thing, because we have an aging population.
That's, we, that's right. That's, I think, isn't Church Hill, Church Square?
Church Square.
Yeah, Church Square, yeah.
I think, that's, that's it. Fifty-five and older, and the Villas.
And the Villas.
And the Villas, right.
And-
And that last section of those type treat.
The Villas, I don't think is, I think it just hap, I think it just happens to be.
I think it was. I think it was proper that way.
What's that?
The Villas.
Yeah, it was.
Yes. Yeah, the fifty-five.
Yeah, I was here then.
It just happened to be.
I think, no, it was designed that way, because-
Yeah, it was-
Because they have one in Yorktown and someplace else, yeah.
The guy from Yorktown, Monty, whatever his name was, he was the developer and he pitched that to the planning commission and that was the selling pool.
Yep.
We define elderly housing as sixty years of age or older.
Not quite there yet.
We did. Well, the, the, the industry proper though, is almost always fifty-five and older.
Fifty-five, yeah. Well, AARP starts at fifty, so.
They start, they start wooing you at forty.
Exactly, exactly.
Twenty.
So again, for me, where are we with this? I mean, we're, we're talking, are we making the decision, are we not making the decision? Are we agreeing not to disagree? Again, three years ago, we said we're going to leave it more restrictive, because this is very restrictive in my mind, and be more flexible. Or are we going to be very restrictive and less flexible and then therefore we need to change these numbers? That's the decision to me that needs to be made, because then that just starts the discussion of where, what are, what are realistic numbers here?
What numbers are you talking about?
The ones that Tammy-
You talking about the density?
Yeah. Yeah, Tammy's given us for all the different density with the lot size and what the lot density should be if you applied the lot size. Are we, so the decision we made consciously a few years ago was, we're happy with the density, we don't need to change it, but we're going to be very flexible, because special use permits give us the ability to work and help the developer change it to what we want it to be. That's what the whole point of being very flexible, keeping it restrictive, but having the special use permits. If we're going to say we're going to eliminate special use permits, then we need to be a little less dense with some of this stuff, because I think our numbers are too restrictive over what's going on.
Yeah, I think the whole point-
Based on what?
Of the SUP was that we would have more control and we could get what we wanted that way.
But we did. Well, I mean, the latest development that was approved had two SUPs approved in it.
Mallory Point had six that were irrelevant.
That were irrelevant?
Got rid of the RV parking, which is what, what they did. They, where are they? Find them. They were so what? Special use permits. Y'all make a big deal about them, but they're just a so what? I don't know if I have one.
We take them seriously, they are special.
But they're, but that's, we should change that nomenclature, because they're really not. They weren't designed to be that way. That's just the-
Right. That's just industry jargon.
Industry jargon. And it wasn't meant to be this, you know, the lighting of the burning bush and, and that, that, it was never designed to be that way. It was a tool to, that the government had in order to, to be able to, with special use permits, you can add conditions and you can say, we'll give you this if you do that. Whereas straight zoning, it's either up or down and that's it.
Right, but I don't know, I'm not sure what your point is, because what we've demonstrated, the town council has demonstrated, from the cottages to Red Point Tap House to the daycare, to be using special use permits as they're intended. I mean, we approved the cottage- I mean, we approved the cottages with two special use permits that they requested. We approved a daycare with a special use permit to, we used it to put a fence around the daycare. So, I, I, I'm not sure, like, I think you're, some of, some of you may be confusing, you know, what appears to be a distaste for special use permits with saying we're eliminating special use permits. I think that goes around the same lines as people who said that the new council members were no growth, when, you know, I think we just showed last week, we worked with a developer to, to reduce the density, approve special use permits and approve a development. So, I think that, I wouldn't get too caught up on superlatives, because that, that's just not the reality, I don't think.
Well, there's two different animals when it comes to special use permits. The kind that says you can put a fence around the daycare and then the kind that says that, that gives the, the tool to waive density or waive setbacks and things like that. They're different animals, although they're called the same thing.
I agree, but when you have a zoning ordinance and then every developer is saying, I want an exception to that ordinance to increase the density, right, and that is, that's the, the rule, not the exception, apparently, appears to be. Well, you know, a blanket special use permit across the board kind of nullifies the point of having the, the zoning to begin with.
But the data that Tammy compiled bears that out there. If you have a lot size in the neighborhood residential of fifteen thousand square foot, feet, and your density is two, that means you're leaving one on the table, because it, it, mathematically, it should be three.
But you couldn't get in three.
Yes, you could.
You could get in two point nine. That's what the math says. Same on the next one, three point six. So, it appears to me, you know, if I look at that as a scientist, I would say the person probably rounded down to what's possible.
I just think, I, I don't, I'm gonna see what you're saying there, but anyhow, that's.
Well, an acre is about forty-three thousand square feet, so if you put three thousand, that would, three at fifteen thousand, that'd be forty-five thousand, so you can never fit it on there. So, you round down to the next one, because you could fit that on the, on the property. That's what I said. If I was gonna change something on this document, it would be the lot sizes to match up to the density.
Well, but they collectively, the planning commission and the town council, thought that these were appropriate lot sizes.
Well, they also thought it was appropriate density. I mean, they wrote both of these numbers.
With the flexibility.
With the.
With the cost gap that we would use SUPs.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we're getting a little circular in our discussion.
You're allowing innovative communities special use permitting.
We approved two of them last week.
To increase the density.
No, that's the point.
Why didn't you approve his tonight at the Promontory with the attached residential?
Because I think it's too dense. I think it should be reduced. And that's from my efforts at campaigning and talking to the citizens of the town.
I will clarify that the Promontory, the overall density is less than the five units per net developer acre.
Overall.
Overall, right.
Section may be a little dense, but it's not over density.
And if you spread it all out, then what you're gonna do is eliminate all the green space, which is what the people are looking for. So, give me less yard to take care of. Matter of fact, the whole thing with the condos on the other one is give me no yard to take care of. And give me green space in a park where I can go and relax and somebody else to take care of it. That's what people are looking for. That's what the market is and we're sitting here basically saying, no, they don't. They want bigger yards and they wanna be spread out and go look at what's being developed now, because that's what, it's just.
Well, what's being developed is what's being offered and, you know, there is throughout the country, a housing shortage, so there are efforts in urban parts of the, of the country, I think, to do that. But these developers are, take the cottages, for instance, is gonna build his hundred and four homes, confident that he's gonna sell them, so he must be confident, because he worked at getting this package through, that he's gonna sell his homes. So, I think it must, he must believe the market supports those homes.
Having done development and sunk costs, sometimes you gotta figure out where you're gonna draw a line on what you've already sunk and what you have to do in order to get out from under what you've got and to get it approved and get moved, which isn't necessarily meaning it's gonna be, I mean, that's how a lot of these projects end up going under. And you end up with half-built developments and roadways to nowhere and things like that, because you've got it to where it's been regulated out of being profitable and they get stuck. So, no, it doesn't necessarily mean that he's there. It may mean something completely different. You don't know.
Fair enough. I mean, he's selling it, so if somebody's buying it.
All right, we're not gonna solve this issue this evening, so if we could move on.
Well, what were we supposed to do with this? Just discuss it? Are we supposed to do anything? Are we making changes? Are we not making changes?
Staff's just looking for direction.
I do think that one thing you mentioned about the side yard setbacks, so.
Yeah, could we look into that?
Immediate attention.
Ms. Clarice.
Yeah, we knew, we can agree on that.
Consistency.
So, you want me to bring it back as a public hearing for a text amendment to change from the six feet side yard setback for the cluster to ten?
Yeah, that could work. You wanted ten feet, right?
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate, keep it as same as the downtown, least downtown neighborhood residential.
All right, so we accomplished something. Well, and you bring him back the dwelling duplex, okay? With clarifying information, all right.
Well, I mean, here's, Tammy, from my standpoint, if you're looking for direction, my direction would be is, if they need a special use permit, don't bring them before us. That would be my recommendation. Because if they're gonna be that restrictive and not entertain them, then why are we gonna sit here and beat the developer up and have him come back four or five times, waste his money on all of these drawings? I mean, I'll speak from my own experience. I have sunk a lot of money into a nine hundred square foot addition. I don't know what he's paying for something like this. And, and if they're just not that close, don't bring them before us. I mean, that would be my recommendation. I mean, town council didn't give us any recommendations in February when we were looking for that guidance. Then, I think we need to, if they wanna be restrictive and that's what the people have told them, because they elected them to those positions, then I think we need to stay restrictive. And so, my advice to you in the town is when a developer comes before you, they need to be as close to these restrictions as they possibly can be with almost no special use permit. That would be my, that would be my personal direction to the town as I see it. And I've put a lot of thought in this over the last six to eight months. Sorry, it's so negative, but that's the way that I've interpreted it.
Well, and my thought is that the perception is reality for the people who, in, in town, who voted for no growth. They didn't hear you say controlled growth. They heard you say no growth. So, and that's the perception. I mean, I'm seeing it on Facebook. I see it on Nextdoor. You know, it's no growth and look what they've done to us now. It's, it's discontent. And, you know, what is it? This is the time of our discontent. And that's what's going on in the nation. It's what's going on in town. And people sit behind their keyboard and just get angry and put out angry, negative things. I think there needs to be some positivity and I'm not sure that the positivity is, don't ever come back to us with any special use permits. But at the same time, we've gotta be flexible. We've gotta be reasonable.
I mean, I, you said apologize for the negativity and you said something about positivity. I mean, I, I saw your statement as positive and if I was a developer, I would much rather, I think, I'm not a developer, but how much better would you feel if you walked into the room knowing what you could do, than having to come in here and try to figure out what y'all wanted me to do?
But you're not gonna get any creative or innovative product that way. It's all gonna be the same.
What, so give me an example of. Okay, that's creative and integrative?
For Smithfield, yes, yeah.
Because it would be the first, I mean, this is a PMUD like, like the Grange and we're talking about it. So, I don't think that, and, and they were happy to receive the feedback that we gave them, so, you know, I don't think that, I think to say that we're not, that if we have rules, we're not gonna get creativity, I think would be, I mean, look, look at our children.
I didn't say rules. I said eliminating the SUP.
Nobody's talking about eliminating the SUPs, though. Like, you, you know, I think y'all are, you know, saying it as if they're being eliminated, when just last week, the town council approved two of them, I think is, is, is misrepresentation. You know, it doesn't, that doesn't even, it's not really logical.
All right, I'm not gonna bait that with you. We need to move on. Spend too much circular, circular logic on this item as it is. Ms. Clarice, our next item is environmental study assessment.
Yes, this was at the request of the town attorney to discuss environmental requirements, specifically Phase One A and cultural historical research required on rezoning.
The, the the reason houses are so expensive and everything else is so expensive is the, the regulations that are imposed in this country now on just about everything are absolutely ridiculous. Case in point, Dr. Pope's develop, we, we have rules and, and we need, and, you know, and I understand that. And nobody sits around and trying to think up rules to make things more expensive. But in this case, a Phase One environmental on a farm, on a, on a piece of land that's been farmed for a hundred years is just, just doesn't make any sense. And yet, the, the museum says, you should go do this. And so, developer runs off and goes and spends thousands of dollars to find nothing, except maybe a few arrowheads. Well, people have been picking up arrowheads and that, those fields around here forever. And so, we have, we dutifully say, yep, you need to go do that. And they do that, because they want to appear in front of us and say that we've, they've checked all the boxes. And it's, all we've done is, is made somebody, we paid a consultant, somebody's paid consultant to do something that everybody in this room can tell you what it's gonna say.
Right. We're not getting any great revelations.
You're not.
We're just putting a burden on the.
Years ago, like, I, I represented the developer who did Long Point. And that was a different issue, because there were known sites up there where they thought there was major historical site. Well, there was a Ford up there, Ford Boykin, but that, that.
Uker.
Ford Uker. But that, as well as, you know, there was lore that said that was one of the first sites was development after Jamestown. So, there was rea- reason to believe there could be historical significance up there. But around here, you pick any, pick any.
Field.
Field. And somebody wants to go out there and do something, if it's been cultivated for a hundred years, you don't gonna find anything, nothing. But yet, we're gonna make people go spend that money. I just think it's wrong. But that's just my personal opinion, but, but I've been doing this for forty years and I just see, we shouldn't do things like that.
Pretty educated opinion.
I will say, I did reach out to Jennifer England. She indicated that she relies on VCRIS, the Virginia Cultural Resource Information System. In this particular area, for the Ben's Church in Turner, the VCRIS system identified two archaeological sites that were located near that site in question. When they did the sweetgrass, they actually identified seven new archaeological sites in nineteen locations. And so, she does rely on that.
I'd love to see what the reports say. I mean, that would be really interesting reading to see, if you go and spend all that money to do seven sites, and what do you come up with? Apparently, nothing. Because I expect there's not anything that's gonna stop that project.
Well, it stopped, I mean, it changed the whole sweetgrass project there, right?
What?
The archaeological findings?
There was shovel testing that identified as a highly probability area.
Based on archaeological stuff?
Yeah. Well, that, that was, they found some sites over there with archaeological findings and instead of doing the archaeology, I guess, they just changed their layout. And they had to redo their SUPs.
Well, that's, that's what we had to do up in Long Point. We, you would just segregate an area and say, well, you know, that's a, that's a potentially, an area you don't. They're not gonna do anything with it. They, it didn't liken it as up to being a museum or anything like that. It just sits there.
Well, anything we do find goes to our museum. Are we, are we discussing whether we wanna make people keep doing it or just this instance, this specific?
No, I, I just think we need to.
Well, I guess I might ask for a bigger picture. Does a developer, does MTO come to you and say, I wanna buy seven acres by Sherwin-Williams? This is what we wanna do with it. And they sit down with you and Mr. Cluck and say, what do we do from here? Or do they come to you and say, hey, here's our plan. We saw this land. We took side light aerial. We had it surveyed. We did this. This is what we wanna do. Is there a checklist? Because a lot of these things are done as you give us our packet before we even get a chance to even say. I don't even know what the process is. I, I don't understand the process. Does a developer come to you and say, look, I'm looking at, let's pick on Philip Edwards. I wanna buy his farm and I wanna develop it. Do I come to you and say, hey, I'm thinking about buying Philip's farm. I'd like to develop it. And you're gonna tell me you can do X, Y, Z, this, 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 this? I mean, is there a checklist? Is there?
There's a pre-application conference that we discuss with the applicants and go through the procedure. Once we've received the completed application, we send it out for a review and comment. One of the comments received from the museum is the request for a Phase One A cultural resource study or depending on what she finds in VCRIS, maybe something more, more, more elaborate than that. Once we've addressed all the comments, then we bring it to the planning commission. Usually, we're waiting on the VDOT, just because their review time's a lot longer. But we do appease all of staff's comments first before we bring the package.
What happens on a commercial development? I wanna put a Chick-fil-A here and here's two acres. What do I need to do? I mean, is that another preliminary?
It would be the same thing. I know most of our commercial area is still zone CC out in that Ben's Church, so it would be a full rezoning.
I guess, do we have anywhere in these things that lay out those types of processes for us to look at, to understand the hierarchy that happens before we see a packet?
Yes.
Because I mean, I'd be interested in reading that. I just don't know where that is or, I don't know how you can help me with that, but. Back here. Zoning amendments.
I would say, though, if it, you know, if the discussion is about whether or not to do these things or not, we have a museum curator. We have, you know, that's our subject matter expert, if you will, so I don't, I wouldn't ever think that, you know, that we would, if she said, recommended doing it, that we would not do it.
Were we asking for a decision tonight?
No, ma'am.
I mean, again, I'll speak, I, I think we need to be sensitive to how much, you wanna call me a developer, because I'm putting a nine hundred square foot addition on my building, that's fine. But we need to be sensitive to the amount of money that it costs to do things.
A small business, yeah. Especially a small business.
I mean, and, and I can give you multiple examples of what I'm going through right now, but I wouldn't have done the addition had I known all the hidden costs that were involved and what was going on at this point, because I just don't get it. It's not stuff imposed by the town. It's just every time you turn around, every time we tell them to go to the podium, every time we tell them to go back, I just cannot imagine the amount of money they're wasting. And they're sinking into this, just to satisfy us over some of these little details of stuff that we're getting hung up on, when in the grand scheme of things, does eight houses and ten houses and eight houses and ten houses at the corner of James and Washington make a hill of beans on anything? I mean, it's just ridiculous, the amount of money I have spent and we have, and we spent. I mean, it's just ridiculous, the amount of money I have spent and we have, and we spend, and developers spend on this. I couldn't imagine what Mr. Luter's done on the Grange.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna turn around and say your houses are not affordable, when he's gotta recoup those costs? I mean, that's ludicrous. I mean, I, I mean, it's just unbelievable, the amount, you, you just wouldn't believe what I've paid. At least, I don't believe what I'm paying. And I'm stuck. So, it, it, I mean, it's just crazy.
Thank you all for your comments. We ready to move on to the minutes? We have two sets of minutes this evening, March eleventh and April eighth.
Madam Chairman and members of the planning commission, I recommend that the, the, both sets of minutes be approved, actually, as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, believe it or not, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time and attention.